Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all forms. Mr. Clerk, if you'd please call a roll.
Village Board Meeting, April 19th, 2016. Trustee Maher. Trustee Grady.
Here.
Trustee Penito.
Here.
Trustee Vanenburg.
Present.
Trustee Youngker.
Here.
Mayor Seaman.
Here. At this time, with the Board's indulgence, I'd like to ask that the approval of the agenda be considered, moving item number 26 to item 1A, Appointment of Attorney. If I may have a motion, please.
So moved.
I'm fine moving the agenda.
Should be.
It should be.
I'm fine. Yeah, I don't think it works. Use the other mic. Tell me why you're still motioning.
I'm fine moving the agenda, however, there's an item about building codes that has my name on it. I don't know how it got there with my name on it. I didn't ask for it to be on, so I'd ask that that be removed.
I would like to suggest that perhaps the sponsoring council member be assigned rather than removing that item. There's a number of people on this board that have asked that that item be placed on the agenda, so if someone else would care to sponsor it, I think that would probably get us where we need to go.
I will, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion to move the agenda as amended with item number 26 going to 1A.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 1A, Consider Appointment of Peterson, Johnson, and Murray as Corporate Counsel for Labor, as well as for Corporate Counsel, General Counsel, and Kleintorpe Jenkins for Prosecution. I'd ask for a concurring motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this point, I'd like to introduce Patrick Connolly of the firm who's going to be joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, President Seaman, Clerk Ray, Board of Trustees, Village Staff, and Residents of Tinley Park. My name is Patrick Connolly, and on behalf of my entire firm, Peterson, Johnson, and Murray Chicago, I'd just like to say that we are honored to be appointed as your village attorney. We look forward to bringing all of our resources to serve this fine village, and make no mistake about it, you live in a wonderful village. We look forward to getting up to speed on the many exciting projects you currently have moving forward, and again, we're honored to be appointed as your village attorney. It's our firm's motto that the position of village attorney is one of service. We look forward to serving this board, your village staff, and all of the residents of Tinley Park. So again, thank you for your vote tonight, and we look forward to getting to work.
Thank you, Counselor. Most appreciated. Item number two, Consider Approval of Minutes. The regular board meeting held on April 5th, 2016. May I have such a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consider number three, Approval of the Consent Agenda. May I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk.
Item three, Consent Agenda on Roll Call A. Payment of Outstanding Bills in the amount of $1,642,253.72 is listed on the vendor board approval report dated April 7th and April 15th, 2016. On the roll call, Trustee Grady.
Yea.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vanenburg.
Yes.
Trustee Youngker.
Yea.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number four, Presentation of Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement. If Mary Dankowski is in the audience, there she is, please step up along with Brad Bentonhouse and our village treasurer to receive this. We're fortunate enough to have Mary, who is the Financial Director for the Village of Park Forest, with us, and please.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada to present the Village of Tinley Park with the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for your 24th consecutive year. Pretty impressive. The Certificate of Achievement program has been in operation since 1946. Okay. The purpose of the program is to encourage and assist governments to prepare financial reports with the highest level of accountability in other areas with a vital role in the government's finances. The program has gained widespread recognition as a premier indicator of excellence in governmental accounting and financial reporting. To earn the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, the Village of Tinley Park has substantially conformed to the program's demanding criteria, which go well beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles. Program participants admit copies of their comprehensive annual financial report to the Certificate of Achievement program for a detailed review and evaluation. The review and evaluation is performed by individuals selected from the impartial panel of government finance officers, independent certified public accountants, educators, and others with specialized expertise and experience in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Reports are also reviewed and evaluated by members of the department's professional staff, including those reports that are judged by all reviewers who have passed through the program's criteria on the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. We cede this award to the continued dedication and leadership on the park of this new park of the board, with David Seaman, Tanner Gray, Brian Lottner, Chris Grady, Tony Penito, David Vanenburg, Brian Younger, retired Mayor Ed Zerachi, former trustees Greg Damon, Tom Staunton, Patricia Leoni, and Bernard Brady. It also reflects the professionalism, commitment, and outstanding effort made by the faculty, the village treasurer, and the dedication and hard work put forth by his professional staff, including Allison Brody, Iman Sholz, Ruth Gibson, and Amy K. The Government Finance Officers Association hopes that this award to the Village of Tinley Park serves as an example and encourages others to strive for the same high standards on their own financial reports. Therefore, it is my privilege and the Department of Government Finance Officers Association to present to the Village of Tinley Park the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting.
It's most appreciated that you took the time out of your evening and day to come and join us to make this presentation, but I think it shows the importance to the GFOA as well as to the members of the Finance Committee and certainly the Tinley Finance Team that really put forth the effort day and night to make it happen and to be financially accountable to its citizens. So thank you very much, and thank you, Brad, and Allison, and your team that helped make it happen. Most appreciated. Item number five, Consider Recognizing Jessica Wishwell as a 2015 Telecommunicator of the Year. Trustee Grady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jessica, what we're going to do is I'll read the nomination and then ask you and any of your family members that want to come up in front here will present the documents that we have, your plaque, and we can take some pictures. Jessica Wishwell is a 15-year veteran telecommunicator in the Village of Tinley Park 911 Communication Center. As the primary public safety answering point for the Village of Tinley Park, our telecommunicators are tasked with the enormous responsibility of answering all 911 non-emergency and administrative telephone calls while coordinating field communications via a public safety radio system with all of our police, fire, and EMS personnel. The job of a telecommunicator is not an easy task. A telecommunicator is truly the first responder to any public safety incident our 911 center receives, as they are the first point of contact a citizen will have when they call for assistance. A telecommunicator will carefully question each caller to determine the type of response necessary, the seriousness of the incident, and the location of the emergency. Then utilizing available communications equipment, telecommunicators coordinate appropriate public safety personnel to respond to the location where assistance is needed. A telecommunicator must be detail-oriented, alert to officer and citizen safety, and present meaningful communications within the village-wide radio system to preserve the safety of responding field personnel and the citizens of Tinley Park. Telecommunicators are required to perform multiple activities simultaneously and often must work with frequent interruption. Since beginning her employment with the village, Jessica has taken a proactive approach to her duties. Jessica has filled many roles in addition to her responsibilities as telecommunicator, including functioning as a field training officer, performing as a member of the telecommunicator emergency response team, developing a public safety education program, and most recently organizing a collection and distribution of bottled water for public safety personnel affected by the ongoing water crisis in the city of Flint, Michigan. Jessica's job knowledge, attention to detail, exemplary customer service skills, alertness to safety concerns, and work ethic are well-known amongst her coworkers and the supervisory staff of the 911 center. She voluntarily assists with filling available shifts in our 911 center and is always willing to assist coworkers and promote a team environment in the 911 center. Jessica completes all tasks assigned to her efficiently and with the highest quality. While demonstrating proficient job knowledge consistently, Jessica strives to continue to enhance her skills by seeking out job-related educational and training opportunities to keep up with her telecommunicator profession as it evolves with new methods and technology. In addition to seeking these available on-duty opportunities, Jessica is currently working on completing her bachelor's degree. I'd like to ask everyone here to please congratulate Jessica on her. Award is 2015 Telecommunicator of the Year.
Jessica, please step up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
First, what we're going to ask you to do is introduce who came here from your family, and don't mess up their names.
With me tonight, I have my mother-in-law, Jeanne Condon, my husband, John Wishwell, and my children Savannah and A.J. Wishwell. Thank you, guys, for coming.
I'd like to present this certificate of recognition on behalf of the citizens of Tinley Park. This certificate is awarded to Jessica Wishwell in recognition of receiving the Village of Tinley Park 2015 Telecommunicator of the Year. Congratulations.
And then from our department, I would like to present Jessica with the 2015 Telecommunicator of the Year award that hangs in our Command Center, so again, congratulations.
All right, thank you very much.
We thank you, Jessica, and certainly, we've got family here that's -- public service is kind of what they've been doing with John, a Public Works employee, and Jeanne, a longtime, long-tenured deputy -- well, she functioned in so many different capacities at the village hall that clearly the family has made their impact, so we thank you all. Item number six, Trustee Vanenburg.
All right, thank you. I'd like to consider --
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to consider Resolution Number 2016-R-011, approving a development agreement between the Village of Tinley Park and George Hanus as the developer of property located at 7201 191st Street on behalf of the Webster Property Group, LLC.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to just read through a couple of the bullet points of the development agreement. The first one we have is develop the property in accordance with approved site plan, building elevations, and landscape plan, pay the contributions, and recapture totaling $54,049.96. Construct and maintain all required stormwater retention and detention. The development will be in accordance with all existing village code as they exist on the date that the building permit is issued. They are to construct a right-in, right-out access on 191st Street as a temporary improvement that will be eliminated once the cross-access is improved from the subject property to the west or the south. They are also to install a 10-foot asphalt bike trail along 191st Street and Harlem Avenue frontages. All the new utility lines will be underground. Existing above-ground utilities will not be required to be buried. These are all the bullet points for the development agreement.
This is for first reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven, Trustee Vanenburg.
Thank you. This is in correlation with the same property, the Consider Ordinance 2016-O-020, approving a proposal from George Hanus on behalf of the Webster Property Group, LLC, for the rezoning of a 1.96-acre property located at 7201 191st Street from the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to B3 General Business and Commercial Zoning District.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. This property was zoned R1 upon its annexation in 2010. The applicant is requesting rezoning to B3 General Business and Commercial Zoning District for purposes of constructing a 16,722-square-foot multi-tenant retail structure. The property is located in the urban overlay district and meets all zoning requirements. The comprehensive plan identifies this property as commercial.
Likewise, this item is on for first reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, another companion ordinance.
Thank you. I'd like also to consider Resolution Number 2016-R-013, approving a plat of easement providing cross-access for the property located at 7201 191st Street.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks. Again, the subject property is located in the urban overlay district, and therefore cross-access easements are required to all adjacent properties. The proposed plat of easement provides cross-access to adjacent properties at the southwest corner of the property. Upon development of these properties immediately adjacent to the south or west of the subject property, the developer will be obligated to extend the drive aisles within the subject property to the planned locations for public cross-access in accordance with the plans approved by this board.
This item is for first reading as well. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine, Trustee Vanenburg.
Thank you. I'm moved to consider adopting ordinance number 2016-O-018, granting variations from the required side yard setback and from the allowable even gutter encroachment to allow for an additional addition at 16412 ironwood drive for purposes of a third garage and laundry room addition for the Danke family.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. As I stated in the previous meetings, this is going to reverse the decision on behalf of the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is the second time that the family, the Anthony and Jill Danke, have been before the ZBA, and they were voted down twice. We had discussed it with the family, and I feel that they have come up with a sufficient enough hardship that would allow this variation to go forward. They are requiring a three-foot side yard setback, where the side yard setback requirement is eight feet, and a one-foot eight-inch variation from the allowable even gutter encroachment where there is three-foot maximum encroachment permitted for the eaves and gutters and the required side yard setback. I think there's plenty of pictures up here in the slides. Are there any questions from the board at all?
This item is up for adoption. If there are no questions from the board, does anybody in the audience have any questions? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Item nine on ordinance 018, roll call, Trustee Grady.
Yea.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vanenburg.
Yes.
Trustee Youngker.
Yea.
Motion carries. Item number 10, Trustee Vanenburg.
Thank you. I'm moved to consider adopting ordinance number 2016-O-019, granting a variation from the required setback for an accessory structure at 17710 65th Court.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. This variation request has been presented to the ZBA and has been recommended for approval. The applicant is asking for a variation for a pool that is just being replaced. His pool, when he first installed, was encroaching on the property to the north of him. That property will never be built as it is a park. He was not aware that, before purchasing his newest pool, that this would require variation, so this is more or less for our record-keeping and keep it in compliance.
This item is up for adoption. Anybody from the board have any question? Anybody from the audience have any questions about this item? Let the record reflect that we're none, and please call the roll, sir.
Item 10 on ordinance 019 for adoption, Trustee Grady.
Yea.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vanenburg.
Yes.
Trustee Youngker.
Yea.
Motion carries. Item number 11, Trustee Vanenburg.
Thank you. It's record night for me, so my mouth's a little dry.
Yes, you're keeping it up.
And moved to consider Resolution 2016-R-014, approving a retaining wall maintenance agreement between the International Imports LLC and the Village of Tinley Park for property located at 8301 West 159th Street.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. This is for International Kia, has proposed a parking lot expansion at the rear side of the property, and this would be to accommodate additional vehicle inventory. The expansion required a reconfiguration of their stormwater basin, which was involved in during the construction of a retaining wall. The agreement between International Kia and the village provides for the ownership and the perpetual maintenance of the retaining wall by International Kia. However, allows the Village of Tinley Park to access, inspect, and repair the retaining wall in cases of emergency as deemed necessary by the village engineer. Any costs related to these actions will be the responsibility of the owner of the property. This agreement shall run with the land and apply to all successors and assigns. The agreement also provides for lien rights against the property if costs incurred by the village aren't paid.
This item is for first reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 12, Trustee Vanenburg.
Thank you. I'm moved to consider authorizing an amendment to the professional service agreement with GovTemp USA for provisions of an interim community development director.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Due to the recent retirement of the building commissioner, the departure of the assistant village manager, and the administrative leave of absence of the planning director, it is recommended that the village enter a professional service agreement with GovTemp to fill the position of interim community development director to provide for management and staffing coverage. This position and criteria for a full-time staff position and department reorganization is currently being reevaluated. In lieu of naming a formal replacement at this time, the recommendation is to continue to name Paula Walrick interim community development director. Entering into this contract will allow the planning and building departments to continue to provide the services while the village assesses the restructuring of the department. I'd like to note that GovTemp will be paid $91 per hour. However, the interim community development director will be paid $65 per hour by GovTemp. The difference covers the employment cost incurred by GovTemp. There are sufficient funds in this year's budget.
It's been moved and seconded.
I'd just briefly like to comment. This did come up in committee, and I have nothing against Paula. I agree we need an interim person to deal with some of the vacancies in the building department. I also agree that possibly a community development person may be better suited than a building person, a planning director, and zoning. So there'd be one person that they could go to for all things, and they could share some information. Is everybody hearing me, or?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I've got a bad mic.
How's that? So basically, nothing against Paula. I realize the need for an interim person to deal with planning and development stuff. I like the idea of a community development title and position as opposed to planning director, building director, and the lack of coordination of the three. The only issue that I have is the way that the compensation was arrived at. I'd have preferred that it, you know, there'd be some kind of market analysis to see what this position ought to be paid, and, you know, perhaps between now and the next two weeks we could see what the market rate is for such a position. That's all I have.
Mike, I --
Whoa.
That came up a lot. Pardon me. Mike, we had, after our previous committee, the whole meeting, when you had brought that same issue up, I had directed staff, Dave Niemeyer and the Human Resource Department, to go ahead and compare that market study as you requested. The closest that we were able to find in reference to the specific job description that Paula will be tasked with is in Bloomington. They have an interim community development director, full-time position, who's ranging $60 per hour, and I believe it's $84 is actually going to GovTemp, so it's a fairly comparable number from what we're discussing.
Any other comment from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Item 12 on professional services, a roll call, Trustee Grady.
Yea.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vanenburg.
Yes.
Trustee Youngker.
Yea.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 13, Trustee Vanenburg.
Thank you. I'm moved to consider approving Resolution 2016-R-015, adopting a letter of understanding regarding the intergovernmental agreement between the Villages of Orland Hills and Tinley Park regarding the property at 171st Street and Lagrange Road dated February 1, 2005. This is the Park Hills Shopping Center.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
At this time, I ask that the village manager give us a brief synopsis of the agreement, please.
Sure.
It's the first of two.
No, this is the vote.
It's an amendment to the original contract, typically according to the agenda, public comments stated for the end of the meeting, so if you'd like to bring it up, then you're welcome to.
May I help a little here? You probably get a little confused because on ordinances, we do ask for public comment at the end of each before we vote, but on non-ordinances, this was not an ordinance, just an important appointment and appropriation, we do not. That's just the difference. Public comment comes at the end.
So this is one of the things that was the interim that was through the cycle, or is it determining that this would actually carry back to the -- It's actually through July 31st, because the original contract was from August 1st to July 31st, and so this is an amendment, so it's for whatever, the next four months or --
Right. I think her original contract was, like we said, was last August.
Right.
It runs for a year. So she's off, to answer your questions, she's off the appointment cycle of May 1.
Do we have a second on item number 13?
Yes. Youngker.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'd ask that the manager could talk.
So this is actually an amendment to an agreement that was completed between the two communities in 2005. It's in regards to the Park Hills Shopping Center, 171st and Lagrange. In short, this was a property that was unincorporated. The two communities made an agreement that Tinley Park would annex the property, service the property. There would be a sharing of sales tax, and Orland Hills would also agree to allow access to their stormwater detention facility at 169th and 94th Avenue, and that Tinley Park would pay for the cost of improving the detention and then would be reimbursed by Orland Hills by holding back some of the sales tax sharing. So over the next several years, there was a dispute about the cost of the stormwater detention pond, and really what this agreement does is essentially, it outlines, the agreement was that the cost of the pond was actually about $1.6 million, of which Tinley Park will be fully reimbursed for the cost of that pond by withholding some of the sales tax that is due Orland Hills over the next several years. We have also been holding back -- We have also been holding back monies that we owed Orland Hills, about $320,000. We're going to be paying that in the next couple of weeks. And it also addresses some other administrative issues, such as allowing Orland Hills to basically review the sales tax data that's generated by the property. So this would be a first reading resolution.
And they are also reading the same agreement on their report as well?
Yeah, they're approving it this week.
This item is for first reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, trustee Grady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd ask the board to consider adopting ordinance number 2016-0-021, authorizing and granting a franchise agreement to Northern Illinois Gas Company.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. In 2010, the village of Tinley Park joined a consortium with several other Illinois communities for the purpose of negotiating an updated model franchise agreement with Nycor. Several of the communities in the consortium had old or even expired agreements with Nycor and were having difficulties getting Nycor to negotiate the terms and conditions of a new, updated agreement. The village's current agreement with Nycor was adopted in 1981 with a 50-year term. After several years of negotiations with the municipal consortium, the model franchise agreement has been completed and recommended for approval by the individual municipalities. Highlights of the proposed agreement include, but are not limited to, the following. Term of the agreement will be for 25 years. Nycor will pay an annual franchise agreement to the village. The agreement is non-exclusive. The agreement contains a most favored nations clause in favor of the village for any future agreement with Nycor that Nycor may enter into with another municipal government. Nycor will be required to indemnify the village related to their work usage of the public right-of-way, and the current franchise agreement with Nycor will be repealed in its entirety. This item was discussed at the March 8, 2016 budget and administration committee and recommended for approval.
Anybody on the board have any questions? This item is up for adoption. Anybody from the public here to comment? Let the record reflect there were none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item 14 on roll call, ordinance 021, trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Motion carries. Item number 15, trustee Grady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd ask the board to consider adopting ordinance number 2016-0-014, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year ending April 30, 2017, for the village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will Counties, Illinois.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
On March 21, 2016, the committee of the whole met and recommended approval of the budget for fiscal year ending April 30, 2017. The total general fund expenditure budget is proposed at $51,794,396, and the total expenditure budget of all village funds, including the Tinley Park library, is $152,610,116, as corrected and adjusted. According to state statutes, a public hearing was held on April 5, 2016. A copy of the proposed budget has been available for public inspection at the village clerk's office since March 24, 2016.
I believe there's some highlights behind us. Are there any other highlights that either you, trustee Grady, or staff would like to comment that basically speaks to the items that are contained here? It's about a 400-page document, so there's a good summary up there that I think?
Yeah, some of the key items that are in this budget include replacement of 12 police vehicles, nine in-car cameras, a plow truck, a dump truck, a wheel loader, replacement of an emergency warning siren, replacement of the EMA emergency light truck, upgrade of citizens' emergency notification system, upgrade implementation of a 311 citizens' portal, an AFOIA management system, downtown signage incentive program, music in the plaza, including higher-profile performers and an additional concert. There are grant-funded upgrades for the convention center, assuming that the state ultimately releases those funds under the grant, demolition of certain abandoned properties throughout the community, planning services for the state campus redevelopment, the water meter replacement program, including an enhanced customer portal for access to the information, 167th Street Pump House tank coating for one of the tanks, lining of a 24-inch water main on Oak Park Avenue, on 167th Street from Oak Park Avenue to Manchester. Sanitary sewer projects include replacement of the Harlem Avenue lift station and a lift station at 84th Avenue. Municipal buildings includes replacement of existing security cameras at various locations and the addition of additional security cameras at locations yet to be determined. Public safety, building engineering, and architectural studies, and creation of a capital reserve for fire station remodeling and construction. The electrical department includes Phase 1 of replacement of streetlights with LED fixtures. Street projects include additional contracts, no removal, for Oak Park Avenue. That includes the business sidewalks, street sign upgrades, Oak Park Avenue reconstruction engineering, and 191st Street extension between Harlem to Oak Park Avenue. Pavement management program resurfacing, Bannister School pedestrian bridge over Midlothian, extension of Midlothian Creek. Again, that is 100% grant-funded through the state. Bike path extensions at 179th Street to the Dog Park and from 163rd Street up to 159th Street. Flood control projects include construction of a downtown off-site detention pond, storm sewer installations in Parkside, and stormwater management improvements at Veterans Park. Public landscaping beautification includes the third year of the tree replacement due to the damage done by the Emerald Ash borer, the final landscaping enhancements and so forth associated with the Lagrange Road project, sprinkler and median landscape replacements on Harlem Avenue, and downtown plaza improvements near the Oak Park Avenue train station. In the area of parking, the 80th Avenue North Lot will receive some attention for patching and sealing, and the municipal Lot F, which is the lot by subway, will be resurfaced, and there will be other parking lot repairs at various municipal lots and buildings.
Thank you, Brad. This is a huge effort, and it's kind of nice that the award for the caffer was received, and we had staff present to be able to witness that from that office, but I have to also thank the village board for participating in a very lengthy process. So at this time, I'd like to ask any questions from the board. This item is up for adoption. Anybody from the audience care to ask questions or comment? Let the record reflect there were none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item 15 on ordinance 014, the fiscal year budget ending April 30, 2017. Roll call, trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. This is going to set a tone for a lot of the things to be done in the upcoming year. It's important stuff. Thank you. Item number 16, trustee Grady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd ask the board to consider adopting resolution number 2016-R-010, authorizing transfers from the general fund, water and sewer operations and maintenance fund, and the commuter parking lot operations and maintenance fund.
May we have a second? Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. This resolution implements a series of year-end transfers following established fiscal practices and is discussed at the committee of the whole meeting held on March 21, 2016. These transfers are made from the excess of revenues over expenses expected to be generated for the fiscal year ended April 30, 2016, or from the fund balance of the funding initiating the transfer. The transfers are made to capital reserve and debt service reserve funds to support the current and long-term needs of the village for replacement of infrastructure, equipment, and debt service. The resolution establishes not to exceed amounts for the contemplated transfers of $7.5 million from the general fund, $3 million from the water and sewer fund, and $450,000 from the commuter parking lot fund.
This item is up for adoption. Anybody on the board have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? Let the record reflect there were none. Mr. Clerk.
Item 16, if I might, Mr. Mayor. What you just heard happened, so we don't overlook it, is the way this government budgets capital expenditure, new fire trucks, new equipment, is to wait till the end of the current year and take the monies that are in excess from the current year, and that and only that is then appropriated for the next year, so that you always have a guaranteed balanced budget. So you just heard the funds that had excess, the total. You've already approved the budget, so that money will be spent on the items that were mentioned. You should know that, because, in all honesty, whether this government or some future governments who are listening, make sure they're not going beyond that number, because that's the biggest control you have.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call on resolution 010, trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Motion carries. Item number 17, trustee Grady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd ask the board to remove from the table ordinance number 2016-0-008, amending Chapter 31 of Title III of the Tinley Park Municipal Code Internal Auditor.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. And I'd immediately ask to table this again because of the substantial changes between this ordinance and the ordinance proposed by trustee Grady. This needs to be sent back, per the new village attorney, should be sent back to committee, and I was told to give a date certain of May 3, the May 3 meeting, that this will appear again on the agenda.
Very well. All in favor of the tabling motion to? Oh, certainly.
Is May 3 going to be enough time, given that we don't have a budget and audit committee to discuss it?
Do you want to recount?
I mean, I did look at it, and I do agree it could probably be tweaked.
You could do it the 17th, if you'd be more comfortable. May 17, the next? Does that work?
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
I'll amend the motion then to date certain of May 17.
The second agrees?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 18, trustee Penito.
Consider adopting ordinance number 2016-0-17, ceding the aggregate remaining unused allocation of 2016 private activity bond volume cap of the village of Tinley Park to the Illinois Finance Authority and the Will Kankakee Regional Development Authority.
Do we have a second? Second. Thank you.
Basically, the village has money that comes to the federal government, then to the state, that they're allowed to use to give low-interest loans to businesses that come into town. It's my understanding that there are no businesses in town in the pipeline that can take advantage of this, and that by ceding it over to Will County, who does have a business, we will get a better spot in line next time the money comes up.
Any questions from the board? Anybody from the audience care to comment? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item 18, final on ordinance 017. Roll call, trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Motion carries. Item number 19, trustee Penito.
Consider authorizing village staff and the village attorney to proceed with the demolition of the property located at 17226 South Oak Park Avenue.
May we have a second?
Second.
I don't know if anybody's familiar, this is the old Rogers Hair Care. Our staff has been out there dozens of times. The building's been vacant for a while. I don't know if they have the pictures behind you, but there's quite a bit of things out there that probably, you know, have been left for years and years. Nobody's taking ownership of it. It's gone to court. The court has given the village permission to demolish it. Basically, this is going towards that, getting that vacant, abandoned, disrepaired building demolished, so that it could get put back into use and producing taxes for the village.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board have any questions about this one? I think it's a long time coming. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item 19 on roll call for demolition, trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Motion carries. Item number 20, trustee Penito.
Consider approval of professional services agreement with H.R. Green for building plan review and inspection services.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm sure, as everybody is aware, there's been a few resignations and retirements in the village of late. One of them is Don McNeely, who retired, I believe, in February. This leaves kind of a vacancy in the expectations that the village needs to get done. Earlier this year, several firms were presented. It was determined that the most qualified was H.R. Green and Associates. They're going to be filling in until a new inspector can be brought in.
Very well. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call, item 20, trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Motion carries. Item number 21, trustee Younger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider ordinance 2016-0-016, approving an amendment to the official comprehensive building code for the village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will Counties, Illinois.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The Tinley Park Comprehensive Building Codes amended in 2007 are being updated to meet industrial industry standards and market trends to conform with the 2012 International Code Council standards. These code changes will update our building codes for commercial, industrial, and residential developments, as well as property maintenance codes. The Tinley Park Comprehensive Building Code will include unique upgrades above and beyond the 2012 ICC standards. The village of Tinley Park has been reviewing updates of our 2007 Comprehensive Building Code to include moving from 2006 International Code Council standards to the 2012 ICC code. The following items that are listed below are a summary of the international, national, and state codes that are recommended for adoption.
Thank you. As you notice from your agenda, there's a significant number of changes that also are being included here, including fee changes. This is a fairly extensive rewrite, and included in that rewrite is a move to, I believe, from a type 1 to a type 3 requirement. It also, for instance, opts out of the codes for automatic sprinkler systems for new and one- and two-family dwellings. I don't know if there are any other highlights that are here that need to be addressed. Any?
Mayor, could I just make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Just two things. This is, as noted at the end of this, what you're actually doing is asking the attorney to draft an ordinance, and this would come back for a first and second reading. But just for, yeah, just for clarification.
Come back for a sec. It would come back for second reading and adoption.
Yeah, just for clarification, what's listed here, what was discussed in committee, what was approved in committee for the multifamily residential housing was a type 1. So if there was a desire to make that the type 3, that would be a change that would have to be requested by the board.
Okay, amend the motion then.
I think it's sufficient. It's in the document that it's type 3. I think it's sufficient. It's in the document that it's type 3. I don't think there's any, that that changes. There is, I mean, I think the second and the board all understands that.
I think, according to this, multifamily residential require type 1 construction standard versus the ICC standard of type 3. So we have to amend that, too.
And what is the, that came out of committee to be type 1?
Yeah, it would need to be amended, that Section 2B.
It was recommended by the...
The objective here is to allow a type 3 construction type.
To allow type 3. Yeah, that was a recommendation of the committee. When the ordinance is prepared in final form, it'll reflect whatever recommendation came out of your committee.
Well, that's what requires amendment, because at the time, the committee voted to retain type 1 construction, and it's at this point, and that's why I think Trustee Penito wasn't comfortable with it, is there's been a consensus of the board outside the committee that it be changed and modified to type 3.
So I can amend that now?
Yeah, if that's the case, I would amend the motion for direction to the village attorney to include whatever type the board wishes of this time.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I recommend to accept the Comprehensive Building Code amendments as presented with the one adjustment in Chapter 2, minimum planning requirements, Item B to allow type 3 construction for R2 and R3 multifamily residential developments.
And everybody concurs? The second concurs?
I...
No, for discussion, go ahead.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
Basically, this didn't come up through the building committee, although the building committee did consider it. Given Orland Park doesn't have type 3 construction, Frankfurt doesn't have type 3 construction, the location of the building that this is going to affect, and I understand that everybody's anxious for building to happen downtown, as am I. However, this does basically seem to be affecting one building, and it'll make it much less expensive to build that building. Basically, the way we left the type 3 construction was, I was told that it would be equally as safe as type 1. And the difference, just so everybody knows, is type 1 is masonry between units, and that's, you know, brick, or stone, or cinder block. Type 3 is kind of a hybrid. It's plywood and 2x4s with, like, or 2x6s or 12s for the floor joists, with a coating of concrete over the top. It's relatively new. It's not a tested thing, given that this is downtown. I asked if we could see some research that showed that it's equally as safe, or some testing, or, you know, study, something like that. I've talked to the manager recently. He assures me that they're going to be coming, hopefully that so. Again, I don't want to stand in the way of progress. I understand everybody's anxious. This building's been around for a while, but at the same time, I want to do things right.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board on the subject?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to state some of the other towns that have type 3 construction are Mokino, Oak Lawn, Arlington Heights, Lombard, Downers Grove, and Wheaton, just the name of the few.
Thank you. This item is on for first, would constitute first reading, and the village attorney would be directed to prepare an ordinance amending the codes as discussed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number 22. Trustee Yonker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider awarding a contract with Ares Incorporated for the variable frequency drive replacement at Post 1 in the amount not to exceed $27,295.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The aging variable frequency drives at the village Post 1 station that pumps potable water to our residents were first installed in the late 1990s. The drives have been in excess of 30,000 hours of service and life and are approaching the recommendation replacement age. The project's scope included removal and replacement of one of the four drives at this location. The village's potable water program stations provide potable water to over 100,000 residents in the retail and wholesale service area. The project was advertised in accordance with state bidding laws and received two sealed bids. The bids were open and read out loud. The low bid was core mechanical, but as Ares is a Tinley Park business, the village has a right and its sole discretion to apply its local vendor preference policy ordinance. Under the terms of the local vendor preference, the village may award a contract to a Tinley Park vendor that has supplied the village with a bid amount no more than 5% above the apparent low bid, or Ares' bid of $27,295 is within 5% of the allowable difference. Ares has also previously performed work for the village, and the performance has been determined to be acceptable to the village. This item was discussed March 29 at the Public Works Committee meeting and recommended for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item 22 on roll call, final. Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yumker.
Yay.
Motion carries. Item number 23. Trustee Yonker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider entering into a hold harmless agreement with ISA/WWA for use of a water trailer.
Do we have a second?
Someone?
The village is a member of the Illinois Section of the American Waterworks Association and is a member, and as a member eligible to host, borrow, a portable drinking trailer that is configured to provide potable water via connection from a fire hydrant to hydrate its residents during events. The village has pending tentative reservation to host the water trailer for the Caribbean Black Party, as well as a night out. This water trailer has also provided tips to residents and event attendees on the water conservation, education materials on water sources, treatment, and distribution. This item was discussed at the March 29 Public Works meeting and recommended for approval.
Would this require a roll call? It's an undergovernmental...
No.
Doesn't? Okay.
Only because there's no expenditure here.
All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 24. I'd like the board to consider adopting ordinance 26-0-15, amending Title 11, Chapter 112, Section 112.22 of the Tinley Park Municipal Code, addition of two additional Class II liquor licenses. May I have a motion, please?
Someone?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The proposed ordinance would essentially increase the Class E liquor licenses by two, and the one would be for a Doty's Deli and Cafe, which would be a restaurant and gaming facility to be located at 6,800 West 183rd Street, with the other license for a Betty's Bistro, a restaurant and family gaming facility to be located at 15950 South Harlem. This would increase the number of Class E liquor licenses to 11. Anybody from the board have any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do.
Please.
I'd ask that after this vote this evening and for further conversation moving further, that you would consider capping the Class C licenses for certain, at a certain amount in the village for any future gaming cafes, specifically the cafe portion, if you would consider a certain amount in the future.
Thank you. I can do that.
I also have a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
I agree with Trustee Vandenberg, even though I didn't know that. That was one of my points. My other point is, I think if we're going to do these Class C liquor licenses with the gambling, I think that it needs to be done fairly and intelligently. And what that means to me is if there's 100 businesses out there, we should hear what each of those 100 wants to bring, where they want to put it, and what they want to bring, so that if we're going to give this license, we could use it to bring back businesses that have been vacant for years, and, you know, bring businesses that everybody's like. I, you know, I don't know who else besides these two had anything or presented anything or were interested, but I do recall it being mentioned that a lot of people sought these licenses. So if we are going to consider these in the future, perhaps everybody that's involved could be presented, so then we, as a board, can decide. This is the best fit, and if we don't put this here, this building will never get developed. That's my point, and thank you.
I appreciate that. I think, you know, in answer to some comments, we've actually taken some liquor licenses off the table, so that it would force these types of licenses to come up and to be discussed before the board.